Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we have a dog from the Dog Pound that we would like to let the public know is available for adoption. This morning, my grandson Quentin Jones is shadowing me. He's a student at JVS, and he likes dogs, so he's gonna help me out, and that way I don't have to get down and get up again, because when you're 25, it's hard to get down and get up again. The Dog Pound tells us that this is a Chihuahua mix that was found in Lorraine. It's a male dog. He's very, very friendly, and he is in cage 90, and is it available for adoption? Oh, it says today, May 26. Kennel hours are from 10 to 6, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 10 to 4:30, Thursday and Friday, and 10 to 4 on Saturday. And this is the week's featured pet. I'm not sure, it says he's a year and a half old. I'm not sure what our batting record is. Commissioner Kallo, have you found out about your dog?
I haven't found out. I asked when I got out here batting.
And nobody told you?
Well, Von told me I was losing to you by.
Oh, good. Please take a look at what we've got. There are other dogs that are available, and we would like to have you take them home as your pets. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is the May 26 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I have two thoughts for today. The first was given to me by Tony Shanahan, Commissioner Kallo's administrative assistant. It's a quote from Hat Magandi that says, "The future depends on what we do in the present." And the other quote is from leadership Lorraine County's calendar attributed to Ron Coco from Clark &amp; Post, class of 1985. It says, "If you are going to serve, stand by your convictions and beliefs with perseverance and compassion." Madam clerk?
Any resolutions? Number one, job and family services bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, did we pull that one for the baskets?
Yes.
Yeah, I never signed it, Commissioner, so I believe it was taken out.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Are there going to be some discussion on it?
What's the pleasure?
Sure.
Discuss it, or?
What it was?
Well, it was flower baskets for the city of Alariah, and I think they cut back on those, and they wanted our share to be like $2,300.
I had some dialogue with the city after the PO was put in, and I didn't sign it when it came up, and I meant to get to it, and I didn't, and that's why we asked to pull it later on, after you had the package. I spoke with the Safety Service Director in Alariah, and there'll be some cutbacks in the amount of baskets put around the city, and we probably have an opportunity to revisit the level that we participate. They do put the baskets up around all along Justice Center, the courthouse, and the admin building, but I want to get a total picture about how much the program's gonna cost and what our participation level would be. There may be some reductions that we can have there. Everybody's experiencing some difficulty with paying for stuff.
So you're going to come back to us with a reduced figure?
Yes, I know this is near and dear to your heart, Commissioner. I would hope that the board would agree to participate. I just haven't clearly figured out what the level of participation is.
Fine, well, that was my question. I didn't know if it was being scrapped completely, or if we were...
Just a reduction.
I know better.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the airport number nine, rescind resolution number 05361D, adopted April 28, authorized in county administrator and county prosecutor's office to take the necessary action in transferring all county airport assets from the direct control and ownership of Lorraine County Airport Authority to the direct control and ownership to the county commissioners.
I believe that the Commissioners need to rescind this resolution, and then I think it's the desire of the board to have some discussion and then decide how we wish to proceed. I think we agreed with our legal counsel at the last session to rescind this resolution in order not to prohibit any action in court proceeding, any action, I'm talking about any action, that would be required of us to proceed in taking over the administration of the airport. As you are all aware, the ACLU sent a letter to Assistant Prosecutor Jerry Ennis. By the way, the Commissioners finally got copies of it after our last board meeting. We were asked to comment on about you, and perhaps you had yours earlier. I didn't know what they were talking about when the newspaper called, so I got a copy finally last Thursday. But in no way am I interested in doing battle with the ACLU over what I thought was a perfectly legitimate action, and what we were advised was a legitimate action. So having said that, I will move to rescind the resolution as adopted on April 28.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Okay, now, I see there are several people in the audience whom you wish to have something to comment about, and...
You may want to read the resolution.
Read the resolution.
Yeah, number 10.
We have, and I'm open to suggestion. We have a prepared draft resolution that was prepared by a clerk. It says, "In the matter of authorizing the county administrator and county prosecutor's office to take the necessary action to transfer all county airport assets from the direct control and the ownership of the Lorraine County Airport Authority to the direct control and ownership of the county commissioners. Be it further resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that the board hereby authorizes the county administrator and county prosecutor's office to take the necessary action to transfer all county airport assets from the direct control and the ownership of the Lorraine County Airport Authority to the direct control and ownership of the county commissioners. Further be it resolved, this action shall be completed as soon as possible." Normally, the board takes action on our agendas as it moves forward, and we take any public comment under item I, if you picked up an agenda, which is the last business that we do. We can take public comment anytime we so choose, or not, as we choose as the board. It's up to us how we wish to proceed. Having said that, I assume that you want to hear what the audience has to say.
Sure.
Mr. Barth?
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. Commissioners, thank you very much for hearing us out on this very important issue, and for the opportunity to speak on it. What I hope we can agree to here today is not to raise the rhetoric anymore. I think the airport is a little bit too important for that, and I don't think anyone questions your right to take control of the airport. What was upsetting to the board was how it was done in a vacuum and the reasons that were given. We feel we have done a good and efficient job, and have the facts to back that up. Any tenant, user, or citizen that attends our meetings can attest to that. I was brought here five years ago to do a job, and together with the board, we have had many successes. One only needs to turn the clock back five years to remember the chaos at the airport. The board and I promise that we will work with you on this transition. In fact, I've already supplied Mr. Cordez with all the information he has requested. All I ask is that you work with us. Before you take this action, though, I ask, all I ask is that you thoroughly investigate and talk to people that know and understand aviation. Running an airport today has become highly specialized. The safety and security of that airport will be in your hands. The FAA has cooperated with Lorraine County because professional management was in place, and like anything else, it's all about relationships. I have advised them of the situation here, and they will not get involved in local politics. But I can assure you that privately, they're very concerned because they have made such a huge investment in this airport over the last few years. They have faith in the current management structure. All I ask is that you have the same faith in us. The airport was mentioned in the recent article on quarry development. The airport will indeed be the front door to that development. New facilities will be needed, and FBO professionals will be needed to run it. I urge you, if you go forward with this, I urge you to give whatever support you can to Johnson Aviation. They are tremendous asset to the airport and to this community, and we have them here with us today. I would also like to add that I recently heard from the reporters that you have been dissatisfied with the independence of the board. I want to reiterate that we have been operating under the premise that everyone was satisfied with the board and what we have accomplished. We have always cooperated with any requests from the Commissioners. We respect the board's wishes, but feel you are moving a little too quickly on this issue, and more discussion between the airport board and the Commissioners needs to take place. In closing, I'd like to ask you that you take the lead of the United States Senate and sit down and have some more discussion before you invoke this nuclear option. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Anyone else?
I'd like to introduce George Andrews, who is our president, and Holly Linden, who is our vice president of the board.
Good morning, Mr. Andrews and Ms. Linden, both of whom I leave on my appointments to the board. Welcome.
Hi, I am George Andrews. I'm taking my turn as the president of the Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority, and I would simply support Michael Barth's comments about the cooperation amongst the board members and the success and development of the airport over the last five years while he's been here. Many of you may remember, I was quite unhappy with the way that his appointment was made. I joined Commissioner Blair in complaining about that at the time, but have since become very supportive of Mike's efforts. I think the Commissioners would, and the Commissioners staff, would be hard-put to it to find someone as reliable and well-connected as Mr. Barth, and I urge you to think, along with him, think very carefully about this action before taking it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Holly, good morning.
Good morning. Betty and Mr. Taylor and everything, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and discuss this. I found out about this, as many of us did, through the newspaper. It was very shocking. We have had one purpose in mind, and that is, we were appointed to improve and run the airport as efficiently as we can, and I think if you look at our record, you'll find out that we have done that. The assets that you're receiving back in this airport are 100% improved from what we received five years ago. We've been able to make major accomplishments. We are, this county airport is now used as a model around the United States for what general aviation airports should be done. We've just made great strides, and we've done that to serve you. And if you don't wish for us to do that anymore, then we respectfully respect that. However, we do urge you to please take the time, open up some communication between us and you before taking this action. All we want to do is let you know what exactly you're getting into with this airport. You know, there's safety issues involved, there's financial issues, there is a future of Lorraine County at stake, and what gets done out there. If you have great economic plans for that, we think that is wonderful. We would love to cooperate with that and be a part of that. We in no way are trying to stand in way of anything you want to do. We simply want to open up some more communication between us and you, and continue to serve as we have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Rob Johnston, and I'm the president of Johnston Aviation.
Good morning, you're welcome.
Good morning. I can only, I guess, in an overall view, from our standpoint, as the business that currently operates the concession of the airport, which is the company that actually handles airplanes, handles the airplanes on the ground, the airplanes that come into the airport, and distributes fuel and services to the people and the facilities that manage those assets that are delivered. We have been working with the airport board and with the county to develop a plan for the long term to improve our capabilities. Michael Barth is a professional with his management experience in the past in Cleveland, brought to this airport a record of success that we have tried to embellish by participating in the development of those facilities. My partner Doug McConnell, who's in the back here, and I have invested over $200,000 in the airport itself, and the infrastructure that supports the delivery of the services I mentioned. I think it's critical, in fact, it's just paramount, that we get a clear direction from the Commissioners and from the county government as to what role you want this airport to play in the development of business, in particular in aviation, and of course, in the industrial and economic region. I've heard talk this morning, just met Mr. Kallo today, about the Nowaka Corridor, the road development. This subject has been tossed around in the county for, in my experience, over 20 years. And, you know, I'm overjoyed if we're finally gonna actually get something done about that, because the other things that I do in my life, and I apologize for rambling on a little bit here, but I'm in the metal business, and I tried 20 years ago to establish a manufacturing plant in the airport facility, and one of the biggest problems we had is we can't get trucks in and out of that airport. These are things that take time to develop, and they take time to discuss, and they have to be discussed from the viewpoint of everyone involved. It's not just one committee or one or two people that are gonna take care of this whole situation. It is a group effort. I pledge that our company will cooperate. We do understand that the Commissioners own ultimately the authority to operate the airport, but you need us to be involved in that, because at the very least, we need to be able to advise you of the things that you need to do to keep yourself safe and legal. I'll be here for any questions you might have, and Doug also, at the conclusion of the meeting, but I thank you for the time. I urge you to take the time and take a deeper look at what you're doing and bring all these parties together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Johnston. Now, Shirley, you're gonna have to tell us that you're not related to the previous speaker.
Oh, I did, I was so busy thinking about what I was going to say, I didn't even notice.
I think you have similar names.
I, oh, not Shirley.
No, not Shirley.
I am Shirley R. Johnson from Oberlin, and I am not speaking on behalf of the airport or who manages it. I'm speaking on the behalf of open government, and I want to reiterate and elaborate just slightly on what I said on May 5. The intent of the open meeting law is to require governmental bodies to deliberate, and that word is italicized or darker, is to deliberate public issues in public. And then it further defines deliberation means the act of weighing and examining reasons for and against a choice. Moreover, deliberations require a thorough discussion of all factors involved, a careful weighing of positive and negative factors, a cautious consideration of the ramifications of the proposal while gradually arriving at a decision. And that does not mean making comments that it's more efficient or more economic for the county commissioners to do it than the airport board. It means really doing what this paragraph says, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Manillo. I was a member of this board when it was initiated. Harold West, Bill McCray, and myself were appointed by the city of Alariah to represent Alariah when the airport authority was supported by Alariah, Lorraine, and the county commissioners. I think the fact that it's all been put into one unit with the county commissioners makes it run more efficiently. We had our problems when we had to deal with the three entities trying to get the support that was necessary. I lived away from Alariah for 10 years. I moved back two years ago, and I'm not terribly familiar with what's happening with the airport authority until I began to read about it in the newspaper. And it seems that what I've read and what I've heard today sounds like the airport authority is doing what it was charged to do. And it puzzles me as to what this change is all about. If it's to conserve funds, I'd like to know how that's gonna happen, but I have the feeling that the board is doing again what it was charged to do, and I've heard all the support for the board, but I've not heard anything as to why you want to take this responsibility away from them. And I don't know how I get that information. But as I say, we've come a long way. There was nothing out there but a big farm when we started, and it's evolved into something which we can all be proud of. And the reason for it being there as far as transportation, before it was there, we had surface roads, we had railroads. There was no aviation. We have built that now into something which is quite remarkable. And we've always been aware of the fact, early on anyhow, that industry was very happy with the fact that there was an airport there. There were times in Ford Motor Company when it was up and running, all of a sudden, they had to shut down an operation if they didn't get some parts in there in a hurry. And people like Carl Nielsen and other people who had airplanes would fly off somewhere, bring back a few boxes of fasteners, and that plant kept running. I don't know how it's being used today as far as industry is concerned, but it would seem to me that if there's a use there, it's important that we continue with it. How it operates, I guess, is something you're going to determine, but it sounds to me like the board is doing what it was supposed to do, and I just wonder why you want to take that away from them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe it's Dr. Manillo?
That's correct.
Thank you. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Deuce. I own a company called Sky Assurance. We have a hangar and offices at Lorraine County Airport. We're a tenant there. I've been there 18 years. In the last five years, I've seen dramatic changes at the airport. We no longer have coyotes and deer running rampant around the airport. We have a fence keeps them out. The runway lights work at night. They didn't always do that. When you come back in the wintertime, you can count on the runway being clean and plowed. It wasn't always that way. All these changes came about with the current board of the airport. That board works for you, the Commissioners, and I feel that the lack of confidence that's being displayed in that board, they work for you for nothing, they do an excellent job, they're volunteers, they need your support. I'm confident they will continue to work with you, but I challenge the Commissioners to come out to the airport, come to my office, come to the fixed base operator's office, talk with the tenants that are there before you make big changes that will affect the future of this regional airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Richard Williams?
Chairman Blair, fellow Commissioners. I'm Richard Williams, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, New Rusha Township. I'd just like to state during the last five years that the cooperation between the airport board and Michael Barth has been exemplary. They responded to issues such as fire service, complaints of noise, planning and zoning. It's been an outstanding relationship, and on whatever course that this takes, I hope that that relationship continues in the future. They did an outstanding job, and example of how local governments and a board of this nature should always work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Other comments from the audience? Good morning.
I'm Ralph Keys, and resident of Lorraine County, interested in aviation, and I've attended the airport county board meetings quite regularly, and I'm puzzled to think that people want to change the operation when they have never attended any of the meetings here. And if you would've spent the time attending some of the meetings at least once in a while, you would have a better understanding what's happening to make this major decision, and the decision is puzzling. Thank you.
Sir, I can answer that question for you. Their meetings are the same time as our meetings, and that's why we haven't attended any of them. I do have an appointment to come out to the airport on Tuesday to meet with one of your board members. There seems to be a lack of accountability to the Commissioners. We need to be kept abreast of what's going on. We expend a lot of money to the airport to subsidize it, and we have a vision to include the airport as an economic development tool. I'd like to ask Mr. Twining if he's been in contact with the airport on some of the things that they're planning there with, is there a 20,000-square-foot building that they wanted to put up there that we just found out about?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ron Twining, Community Development Director for the county. I'm unaware of the building that you speak of, but our relationships with at least the executive director, Mike Barth, through the past five years has been very good. I think our communications has been good, but I'm unaware of this particular project.
Okay, thank you.
Holly, you want to speak?
Yeah, I would like to address the comment made for accountability. To my knowledge, two things have occurred. One, you said about the meeting times being the same. I do have an agreement with that, because I would like to be able to attend your meetings, okay? And because of that, we have, this is the first we do of in the paper, that that was a problem, and we have changed our meeting time to be able to come to your meetings as well as to hopefully open the door for you guys to be able to come to ours. Secondly, when it comes to accountability, we are fully accountable to you and will supply you with anything you'd like to know about, from financial records to any current assets to development. If there's a direction you want to go, we would be glad to work with you. We are fully willing to be accountable to you and have no idea that in any way that we haven't. We've submitted everything that's ever been asked from us, we've supplied you with. If you personally haven't gotten it, I can attest to that, but we certainly have not withheld anything, nor do we wish to withhold anything.
And I think probably from your standpoint, that's very true. I'd just like to ask my fellow Commissioners, since you've been on board as the first of the year, have you ever gotten anything from the airport?
No, I haven't received a thing, and that's, to go back, and this is no offense to the board, as I've said, I think the board's done a very good job the past five years. And speaking to Mike Barth this morning and a few of the board members, I remember when Mike came on, and I had a good relationship with Commissioner Ross at a time when he was bringing Mike on board from Burke Lakefront. I think it was a great move. I think Mike's done a great job, and the airport authority's done a great job, but we are getting to the point in Lorraine County that we have to take an emphasis on economic development, and I believe that's the county's role now. There are a lot of entities out there, as I spoke about. I've got discretionary spending that the county does every year. So far this year, about $2.7 million through March 22 of '05, where we give out money to different organizations that we don't have any necessary control or say over, that there is no accountability factor back. And I know what you're saying, Holly, just ask you for anything. I don't think the Commissioners know what to ask for. We don't run an airport, and I believe under the Commissioners' control of the airport, and Mike Barth's thanks, I think he is an asset to the county and the... And Mike Barth's staying because I think he is an asset to the county and the airport. I think we can bring that all in-house, run it through our economic development. We can do it, building an industrial park, as we spoke about in OAKA, Mr. Johnson. I've been out to the FBO and met Tim and everything. I think you do a great operation. I believe that we can put everything out there, tying it in with all the economic development that is coming up in the county in the next year or two. As I said, I serve on OAKA now along with Commissioner Blair. I'm working on north-south corridor. We had a very good meeting this week with some consultants, myself and Mr. Twining, on how we're going to accomplish this and dialogue with other organizations, ODOT, Ashland County. We're considering Richland County possibly as a way to get our north-south corridor out there, access road from the airport to move freight and commerce out, which is very important to the airport. Correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm very aware that I'm going to be serving on a committee with OAKA about freight and commerce. It's very important to my personal business on how we move things in and out of Lorraine County and that's always been a concern here. And I think keeping the airport staff running as is with Mr. Barth doing what he does and us focusing on the industrial park and the economic development part of it, and I hope that answers your question Shirley, I think we can do a better job of getting things moved quicker and it also falls in line with the state tax reform now being done. Governor tapped in his proposal and through the senate where we were down testifying a couple of weeks ago, if government consolidates and works together, no different than the city of Lorraine joining our life insurance and saving $180,000 over three years, all those little parts, they're talking about rebating us money against our local government funds. And I think the county commissioners have an accountability on ourselves, not necessarily your accountability, but to take care of the taxpayers' money in the most efficient way possible. And I believe that's underneath our economic development department because we know exactly what we can and can't do. Like I said, I applaud Mr. Barth for everything he's done. I hope he spends another 10 or 15 years with us till he reaches retirement age because he's about 29 or 39. So, I mean, those are my comments on why I think the airport are in commissioners' control and as I just told you, Holly and Dr. Andrews, I just met you, I hope you guys are there to advise us if we do have questions about things. So, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Romicks, Oberlin. I guess in the matter of communication, I would just like to know, Mrs. Linden said that communications have been sent to the board. If you haven't received them, to whom have they been addressed? Have they gone to Mr. Cordes, to Mr. Twining or to whom? And I guess secondarily, I would say that if you all haven't been receiving communications or haven't looked at annual reports or anything of that sort, do you really have a clear understanding of the pluses and minuses, the activities, the involvement of the airport?
Can I answer that?
You certainly may.
We did do a request. Mr. Barth got it back to us quite timely on the regional airport and I've spent, I've read this two or three times, I still don't understand it, probably about 60% of it. And it does, I understand with the contracts we have, our employment contracts, the agreement with Johnson Aviation. I mean, I have that all here now. Wasn't anything brought to the new commissioners. I don't know if Commissioner Kokowski received anything, but I know myself and, I mean, we've got different boards and different authorities that we oversee that we don't have things and we're learning that as we go. So, I don't think, other than some dialogue, is when the meeting came, we always got a fax on that. I don't think there's been that from all of the departments, Shirley. I mean, Elizabeth. So, I mean, yeah, I've been getting, Oberlin College brought me something. I've got all kinds of information here since we brought this up two or three weeks ago. Would have been nice and all the other organizations that are in the county that receive funding from the commissioners, it'd be nice if they would bring us up to date or up to speed on what we are actually funding and what they are actually doing with the money they receive.
If I may, thank you for that information, but I go back to my original question and perhaps Mr. Barth or Mr. Andrews can answer it. To whom have these communications been addressed if they have been being sent over the years?
My question was since the beginning of the year, Elizabeth. I only ask because there's two new commissioners here. I think I was trying to make a point. I believe they've been sent. That was my point. Dr. Andrews?
I think that in order to make a positive spin on this, that any request of the airport authority will be honored. Certainly, if you'd like to see copies of our minutes, any information like that, a simple request would certainly have gotten a response. Sorry, we didn't think of sending them to you independently, but certainly if you make such a request, that would be the case. Now, many of the things, the communications that have been sent from the airport authority have been sent to Mr. Cordes and so I can't say exactly what things...
That's completely inaccurate. They haven't been sent to me.
Anything that Mr. Cordes receives, he shares with the board. I think, I'm going to go back because I was the one that made this statement, Dr. Andrews, and I made it specifically because I felt that the new commissioners didn't receive anything since they got here because I haven't received anything since the beginning of the year from the airport that I recall off the top of my head, except for the meeting notices. So, if we want to talk about communication, I think, and I don't mean this to be as critical as it sounds, but it is true. The airport authority and its director are living out there in New Russia Township in their own little world and the only time they really bother with us is when they need money. Then they come knocking on our door. They haven't had much to do with us lately, I would say in the past year, year and a half, okay? When you ask us for money, we usually respond in kind because it's usually a very legitimate request, but as far as communication, it hasn't existed recently. That's my point.
The only communication I receive from the airport is when they need grant matching money or additional funds or they want solid waste funds. The last communication was on, could they get some money for a sign? And by the way, every communication I've ever received was always directed to the board and I was a C.C. to those communications. And if I had a direct communication, the board was always C.C. on it. So, the limited, limited amount of communication we received was with full disclosure and I believe that that's an inaccurate statement that you made, that I received those communications. If there's any supposed skullduggery going on here with holding back of the communications, it didn't occur.
Well, I was aware that copies were sent to various people in the office building and whether it was directly addressed to Mr. Cordes or not, I knew that they were, he was copied on anything that was sent from, I was confident that he was copied on anything that was sent from the airport authority or the executive director. Now, I should turn to Mike and let him speak for himself, but that was my, certainly my understanding and wish.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you need to understand with the pending local government cuts and things like that, that we have to look at every dollar that we're giving out and making sure that we're utilizing all of our funds and if we can do things more efficiently and cost-effectively that we need to try to do that. It worked with the Lorraine County Transit and I was hoping that it would also work with Lorraine County Regional Airport. But I do realize from the discussions today that it is, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to consider with the safety and all the other things specialized with aviation that maybe I'm not ready to take on at this point. And the best thing probably that came out of all this is we are opening up the lines of communication and maybe we do need to sit down at the table and start talking instead of, you know, you guys are over there and we're over here. Let's sit down at the table together and make Lorraine County Regional Airport what it needs to be.
I'd reiterate my last one though, if you give me a second, Mr. Deuce. I still believe in the interest of the county and accountability of funds that the commissioners still oversee the airport, that we take it back underneath our community development. And again, I would like Mr. Barth to continue running it. He does a great job with the airport side of it, but again, on the industrial park and future development in Lorraine County and things that are coming, I believe it's under, you know, our best interest to have it underneath the commissioners.
Mr. Twining stated that they have a good line of communication with the airport and is there a reason why they can't work together without us taking control of the airport and dissolving the board?
Do you want to respond to that, Ron?
Are you prepared to take this over under the Community Development Department, Mr. Twining?
No, it wouldn't be taken over under the Community Development Department. It would become an equal department under the commissioners.
But they would work with Community Development to build that industrial park?
The only comment that I will make is that we will do as the commissioners direct us to do. The line of communications with the executive director and his staff at the port authority, I feel have been good. The building you talked about today was a surprise.
I just found out it was in the paper today too.
Yeah, it was really a surprise because the communications has been very good between them. A lot of that is by phone calls, not written correspondence, but to answer the specific question, am I ready or are our department ready to take it over? No, that was news to me. I think that the policy has to be clearly defined by the board of commissioners and if it's your desire for us to be a part of that, then we will. But we have been, or at least I feel we have been, an equal partner with what the airport board and Mr. Barth have been doing out there if they call and inform us.
Now, Tom.
I guess I'd like to challenge the commissioners to consider a motion to table this vote temporarily until they get all the facts. Mr. Kallo has stated that he's got all kinds of information and he doesn't understand half of it.
No, I said 60% actually, Tom.
Or 60% of it. How could you make a decision to take control of something that you don't fully understand and the people that work for you have said they're not ready to take on yet? They don't even know about it. I feel strongly that, take a vote on waiting with this vote. Get all the facts and information and if you still feel a month from now that you want to do this, do it. But in the meantime, get all the information and perhaps explain to me or anyone else where the urgency is here. What's happening that is so direly important that this has to be voted on today and discussed in private meetings without any public discussion until today?
Well, I would suggest you've probably been reading too much of the newspapers and thankfully I'm kind of tired of discussing it. I would like to comment, Tom.
Go ahead.
You directed your comments to Commissioner Kallo, but I'd like to say, each of the commissioners, thank you, Mike, received a copy of what Ted is talking about. And I venture to say that the members of the airport authority board are not fully knowledgeable about every aspect of this document that he alludes to here. That's why they have a director at the airport and none of us has suggested that the director of the airport be changed. What we have suggested is that the airport become a county department instead of a department run by the airport authority board. And I think that's a significance. And I just want to say, the assistant prosecutor is our legal advisor and this was in the paper. It said Gerald Innis said commissioners are confident their actions were proper and lawful, but decided to discuss the matter in public to avoid a waste of public money by going to court to defend what action we took since the ACLU has decided to challenge us. And by the way, I've been here 15 years and I'd never even seen a letter from the ACLU. So, that's my comment about the issue. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Hopefully you'll consider tabling this temporarily.
Well, and then we can discuss it ad nauseam. Anyone else? Holly?
Whether this airport is run by you or by a port authority, I would encourage you, if this does become your issue and become part of your economic development, that you make a department that has people with aviation experience and airport experience in that department as part of what you do. It is critical for the safety and operation of this airport that people that have experience with aviation be in a department. So, it might be something you create underneath this as part of your economic thing.
I appreciate it. Mike, can I have you back at the microphone for a minute for a couple of questions?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. And just bringing up what Holly had to say, I'm assuming, and you never asked a question unless you normally know the answer, that you have staff that are capable of running this airport, whether it's a commissioners' department or it's an airport authority, don't you?
I have very little staff. I have one business manager who moved into Lorraine County with two little kids and I have a one maintenance supervisor who does all the electrical, the plumbing, and I have a maintenance man. You know, I mean, you talk about efficient, you know, you still have to take the snow off the runways, you still got to cut the grass, you still have to do all that.
Without a doubt.
Whether it comes out of this pot of money or this pot of money is probably irrelevant to the county.
Does it change your day-to-day operations whether you serve under an airport authority board or a county commissioners' department?
I would say yes to that. Because I have a certain amount of autonomy with this board. There has to be a certain amount of synergy between me and the board and quite frankly, I'm not sure that synergy's going to be there. So, I'm holding my options open. I don't want to talk about that in public, Commissioner.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I understand your question. As I said, I think you've done a nice job and I hope you take it to the next level on this because I feel, and I will make the motion in just a second, I would like us to have the airport underneath the county commissioners. So, everybody knows and I've spoke to everybody who has contacted me on this and I think we can take it to the next level. I thank the airport authority for what they've done. I hope we can call you and ask you questions on aviation. I hope Mike's available to call you and ask you questions as we proceed farther along. And there's been a change of dynamics in Lorraine County. I think we need to take that next step. Every time I open a newspaper, the front page is another business is closing and I think we have to be very proactive. And that's why I ran for this office in job development. I think the airport's a very important thing to this county. I've said that repeatedly forever. I've said this repeatedly and Carl Nielsen is a neighbor of mine in downtown Lorraine. It's a very important entity in our county and I think we can really push that forward.
I'd just like to say one more thing. I take full responsibility for the lack of communication over the last few months between my office and the commissioners. Prior to both of you getting here in January, I would send a letter after a letter that would go unanswered. I do provide, and you get tired of writing letters quite frankly, but I do provide a very detailed budget with all our expenses detailed, revenues. We do provide you with financial statements, you know, we're waiting for the audit to be completed now. You will get a copy of that. As George says, we will make sure we send you the minutes to our meetings and like I said, if there was an issue, I didn't know about it. I've been operating this way for five years and never heard anything about anything until I read it in the newspaper.
And Mike, I don't think there's any fault there. I think just with the new board, there's some new directions. We don't have any old agendas. I don't think Lori and I, either one of us do. We both, I think, have a common goal of helping Lorraine County move forward. We're both working very hard.